Great. All right, it is. Seven oh six, let's call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which.
Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to make clear, I think there was some confusion, but this is a special meeting. So we can only deal with the issues that are already on our agenda for this evening. The, what is ahead of us this evening are two very important items. That is approving the summer transfers to close out fiscal year twenty-two, as well as the central middle school ed specs. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. O'Keefe, who's going to walk us through summer transfers.
Good evening, everybody. So as I mentioned in my email. Purpose of the summer transfers is to ensure that all major object codes. End the year with a position that is equal to or better than budget. And if any of the major object codes end up in an overrun situation, meaning actuals are higher than budget. A summer transfer from one or more other major object codes with an under run. We need to move funds in order to balance out the major object code so that all of them have. Are are equal to or better than budget. If, and if you look at the second page, there's a colored chart that shows. The budget before transfers. And the second column is the preliminary actuals for full year twenty-two. And then what the, the third column is, the, is the actual versus budget. And as you'll see in that third column. There's one major object code, services that has a, a negative actual versus budget. So overrun situation totaling a million two thirty-one, six eighty-seven. As everyone, you know, knows is that primarily driven by the special ed tuition and settlements all year long. So an adjustment would be made out of the other major object codes, meaning salaries, supplies, maintenance and settlements. And that settlements line is non-fed settlements totaling one million two hundred and thirty-one, six eighty-seven. So all, in aggregate, those, those four major object codes would give up budget totaling one million two thirty-one, six eight seven. So that the services line is equal to budget. So that's, that's the, that's the, the entries that need to be made and approved tonight. And. As you can see, the overall. Status of the actual versus budget, when you account for everything, we are at. We close the year at one hundred and seventy-three million, six, six, seven, zero, zero, eight compared to our budget of one seventy-four. One eighty-eight, two forty-three. So we had a surplus of five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Which is about point three percent of budget. So our budget attainment ninety-nine point seven percent surplus is point three percent. So that's the, the entry, the entries that are made are on the, actually on the first page in the two-page chart. And, and then we also look at food services. And as you can see on the third page, in that third column, actual versus budget. Overall, we had a surplus in our expense, food services expense of eighty-seven thousand dollars. And every one of the major object codes had a equal to a better budget situation. So no year-end transfer required for food services. So these, the operating fund needs to be approved. And final approval is tomorrow morning with the BET Budget Committee at nine o'clock.
Just in case Erin doesn't see my email, can you please elevate Kathleen? She had to change computers.
Yes.
Hey Sean, I have a question.
Okay.
The question is, so you're trying to tell me that your five hundred thousand dollars or so within the projected budget of a hundred and seventy-four million dollar budget? Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, that, in my mind, is a really, really good job, right?
My view is that if you can. To attain ninety-nine percent of budget, you're in good shape. So we're ninety-nine point seven percent.
So according to your calculations, we have achieved that.
We have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was off for a second, but um, that's the point I wanted to make, Joe. It's pretty amazing to come in at ninety-nine point seven percent of your budget. And so impressive, I know there were times when we had to manage very closely as a result throughout the year, but. Boy, boy, Sean, well done, and it just attributes you, and I know this is a fast close. That was the other thing that everyone should appreciate, that our schools closed just over a week ago. And given the timing, we had to have this closed by really, I guess, last week, and you did it. So, thank you.
We, we did it faster than Alcoa. I think Alcoa is the number one on the Dow Jones.
I think you did, I think you did, that is, that's fantastic. So anyway, Christina.
Sean, again, many times we've said it, can't thank you enough. You don't even work for us anymore, and you did all this in such a timely fashion, so really, really appreciate all your hard work. My, my question is kind of just to be sure we're comfortable with, since obviously the lion's share was able to be done. Out of the maintenance category, and maybe Dan could address that too, just kind of. What did we shortchange that, you know, just how were we able to find the money out of that client item? Just to understand, since I know salaries, we always are trying to kind of figure out, there are some subs and things like that. Obviously, materials, there's, you know, you, you can stop purchasing like you did earlier in the spring. But on the maintenance, I just want to be sure we didn't really shortchange things, and just in terms of where we found the money for that.
It was total, you know, in maintenance, it was, it was out of, you could see that it was out of five categories of expense within maintenance. So varying anyway from nine thousand dollars of savings to three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of savings, depending on. On what program we're in. So it was, it's across the board, really. It adds up to some real money.
Wait, I'm sorry, maybe I missed that way. So, did we, like, Dan, did this really translate into problems, or what, what did we do?
No problems yet, I mean.
It's, it's really early, we have not done that analysis. This is where the accounts landed. With everything processed, but, you know, as you know, it's, it's, it's very early, we haven't analyzed exactly what is there. All we know is we closed the books with every, with every expense and every encumference accounted for. And so, that's the next.
Okay, so the next step will be an analysis of, you know. Okay, great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Michael Joseph.
Thanks, yeah, thanks, sir. Could you, could Sean, could you remind us? What the special ed. Tuition and settlements line was, they, they were over one point two, was that, was that six? I forget what it was.
Uh, the budget, the budget was, I think it was seven point three. And we landed at about eight point six, eight point seven.
And then next year, are we, and for next year's budget. Where, where, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be quizzing you on the spot here.
That's okay, again, I'm trying to remember. I'm trying to remember, but I think we, what we were projecting, projecting for this year, we budgeted for next year.
That's what, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
But it's a, it's a constant battle. I mean, you just never know. Anything can happen, you know, very quickly.
Is that the case, did, without getting into particulars, did that, it was that, was that? Was there a time during the year when that, when that happened, when things changed? Or did we know very early on that we were going to be over that much?
We, we were projecting we were going to be over, I think by about six hundred K at the beginning of the year. And then things progressed and we had some very expensive cases.
Thank you. Karen Kloski.
Thanks. So this question is along the same lines, but I think it's more for Dr. Jones. And it may, may be too difficult a question to ask at this point, just because that would be hard to predict. But because of the new programs we've implemented within special ed for the upcoming year that we've already budgeted for. And the changes are being made. Is the expectation that the ours settlement process will either stay consistent or flat? Is that the goal we're attempting to achieve? And do we think these programs might aid in that process?
You know, I think that's.
Sorry, it's, it's, it's kind of a, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I think we're thinking about it. But I think that's the way we should be thinking about it in connection with our, with these programs, but I'd just like your thoughts on it.
Yeah, so I, to be honest, it is going to save us money in the long run, and it already has. We have some children that will be in our unique program or in one of our programming structures next year. That likely would have left the district because we didn't have anything to offer their families. So I think we're already seeing that the programming is going to be very helpful. Will we see that in one year? I wouldn't expect so. And again, part of that is, we build the budget so early. So, you know, next year's budget was built last fall. And as I'm looking at the numbers, you know, we started at that seven point three, we were projecting seven point eight. And next year's budget, we had built in seven point eight. So we're already starting at a very challenging position. And a lot of that will depend on students who move in. Students over the next year, as we go into FY twenty-four, that will move out. And we can have one student, for instance, that, you know, is, is turning twenty-two and twenty-three, moving on. And that may be a student that had a tuition value of, say, four hundred and fifty thousand. So there's so many moving parts, this one line item, that it's incredibly difficult. I do believe the programming will absolutely, over time, we will see benefits from that. That's what, that's our goal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen Hirsch.
Just on the same line, I just wanted to see, when is it that I, I know that. I think it was this year, or maybe it was next year, where we are, the change in age for, to, for continuing education. Moved up, we, we have to educate for at least one more year than in prior years, right?
Yes, that's right now, yes.
Did that start this year, or will that start next year? Because I think that makes a, might.
It already started. It already started. And, and in a lot of states, they were already doing it. So we were a little bit different in Connecticut in our interpretation.
Okay, um, yeah, that's good. I realize I, I put this motion on the table to approve summer transfers to close out the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Do I have a second, Ms. Downey? Okay, if there's, thank you. Now, if there's no further discussion, I have to do a roll call vote for this. Was there any other discussion on this item? No, okay, thank you. All right, Kathleen still on the yes, Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Christina Downey?
Yes.
Laura Costin?
Yes.
Karen Hirsch?
Yes.
Joe Kelly?
Yes.
Cody Kittle? And Karen Kloski?
Yes.
Okay, great, that passes eight zero. It was actually nice to do this, this way. I know this was something you guys had given to the executive committee to do. But it was really nice for all of us to actually have a, have a moment to discuss this. This now heads to the BET tomorrow morning at the Budget Committee, and they already received it this afternoon. So this eight zero. Okay, I'm just gonna put this next item on the table, but obviously there's lots of discussion. And that's to approve the central middle school educational specifications as presented. Can I have a second? Ms. Downey, I know she's reluctant to do that because she wants to make sure, and I agree. That, let me just start off with the discussion, we're saying, we should not feel pressured to vote on this this evening. It's important that we keep moving forward, that we keep having the conversation. I'm going to ask Laura Costin to probably give us a little bit of an update from her first building committee meeting, so that we understand their timeline. But I know I've heard it from many of you, this is a once-in-a-generation building. And it's important that we all feel really good about what we're putting forward. I think we're super close, is my personal view. But I have a lot of comments from, in terms of numbers, from what we saw in this last go around. So I think this is a really good time for us to be having this conversation. And I'm going to actually sort of tell you a few things as I looked at the Excel. But why aren't I first, Laura, if you feel comfortable, would you mind first downloading us with where the building committee is and the timing? So we all feel a little bit better about what our calendar should look like?
So we have not yet set our next meeting. Well, first, let me just begin with. We had never had a dialogue with each other before. This was the first time I was able to meet. Albeit virtually with the new members. And so I knew, some I did not, but we all got the opportunity to introduce ourselves. And we have such an amazing group of volunteers, and everyone is very enthusiastic. This was more organizational, we elected our officers. And. The vice chair is a provisional vice chair until we have. And maybe our secretary, although I think it's just the vice chair that is provisional. Because we had some members who have not yet been approved by the RTM. We lost one member and gained another. So there are two new folks who are, are getting up to speed and were at the meeting today. There was some managing of expectations because we don't have. Ed specs approved and did not for this meeting. So although, you know, we're close, I think we are close to getting to a building size. That makes all of us more comfortable. And, you know. While there are some members who are curious about what this, how big this building may be, what it may cost. I think we really have to first nail down our ed specs and, you know, there was. There were a lot of questions, which I cannot speak for, you know, for all of us as board members. We all have our, our different sets of questions. But everybody is really. You know, looking forward to. To get this building done and done well. We do have a chair, the chair is Tony Turner, former member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation. And former member of the RTM. And we don't have a meeting yet set because there are so many people who serve on different boards. That we needed blackout dates for people who also serve on P and Z or the RTM or the BET with its many committees. So at this point, we're, we're waiting to set our next meeting. And we'll make sure that it's properly noticed so that the community is well aware of when that will be.
That's great. Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to start the conversation. I know we have lots of questions, but I know that, speaking with many of you. I, or I, but I should say personally. I mean, we know that I was thinking around seven hundred and twenty students, but one of the things I grappled with as I spent a little bit more time, really just going through the Excel. Is that there is a big jump, no doubt, in square footage from the six sixty to seven twenty. And one of the things I started to think about as I really dug in is, is there a way that you size the building? I'm just opening this conversation, and I did some quick back of the envelope, for the classrooms to meet the seven twenty need. But sort of build the rest of it to accommodate a six sixty. And the reason I say that is that, you know, it's sort of for the next foreseeable future. Obviously, the building is more set for somewhere in the six hundreds. But, you know, again, if you're building for the long, long term, that's where I was thinking, especially as, you know, this building will become then. Sort of the key centrally located building. That if there's ever a change in demographics or in redistricting, or for anything, for that matter, or in eighty years. That you have, you can meet the needs of the students. In the classroom setting. When I did that, just to sort of open the conversation, I sort of took everything in this spreadsheet. And kept the six sixty level. Plus, I actually ended up in the, the key in the classrooms area at thirty-nine, nine thirty. Because it's in between, if you remove sort of a science classroom and a science prep. And so my building sort of hybrid, just so you know, ends up at a hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet. And this is just sort of an idea. I know that the Budget Committee also met, and there were some other really great ideas there. So I just wanted to sort of throw mine out, but I think that now I should probably turn it to someone from the Budget Committee. Sorry, Karen, if they can kind of give me a few of the things that was discussed in that meeting, so that we all have information, and then we can kind of go from there. So Christina, do you mind giving us an update there, and then?
Um, I, I, I don't think we got to that granular, to be honest with you, we didn't really get to that granular level at the Budget Committee meeting, to be honest. I think there was a discussion about the building, about the size and scope of the building. Correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, Joe or Laura, but I didn't really think we got to this level of granularity. So if people have thoughts they want to jump in with, because I see Karen Hirsch and Michael Joseph have their hands up, let them, let them go with that.
Fine, very good then. All right, Karen, you were first.
Oh, well, I mean, I, I have a, a quick thought, but I had some of the similar thoughts to you, Kathleen, I just, you know, I, I. Looking back at our past twenty-plus years and even further back from the nineteen seventies onward. You know, we've had, in the past twenty years, we've had eight or nine years over six hundred and fifty students in that building. We're at a historical low right now, but, you know, the district had over eleven thousand students, you know, in the nineteen seventies. And then has gone downward and back up, and so it's a cyclical thing. But I had a similar questions on some of those spaces, and, and I, I think if it's okay, if I pass this over quickly just to Principal Healy. I don't know if he's prepared for this, but he might be best set to address some of those questions, because I had similar questions. If, if we adjust and make a science swing, if we reduce or move or change some of the resource rooms that were listed. How, how can we make this work, but, you know, without negatively affecting the students' education? He, he may best answer that. I think to me, the other piece is, it's very difficult to look at this without having an understanding of where this. Facility will sit on, on. On the property, and I think that's a big piece of this discussion is to, if we need to place it on the footprint of the current building. Where do we put those children? Without negative, we, we can't focus on the education of the students in twenty years. Without thinking about the education of the students we have now. And I know that that's not part of this discussion, but I'm just putting that out there, because that is a big difference where we place this building. If it's on the current footprint or it's moved separately, and I don't know. If the size of this facility will impact that. But on, on the interior space, I, if it's okay for me to, to ask Mr. Healy. I, I had similar questions as, as Kathleen did earlier, and he addressed some of those with, with me.
That'd be great. Tom?
So, yeah, I, I think, you know, ultimately, we, we touched on it a little bit before, when the question was asked, I think at the last meeting about. You know, how seven hundred and some odd kids fit in the current building, right? And I think the answer really comes down to the fact that, you know, you can, you can be as efficient with space as possible. But every single one of those decisions becomes a, like a programmatic change, right? So it either impacts the philosophy, the instructional philosophy of the middle school model, or it impacts how you run your particular programs. So, you know, I think in talking that through, I think that's, that's the way you're looking at making those changes. So for me, to address sort of Ms. Stowe's point, is. The idea of having the right amount of classroom spaces obviously helps from the instructional side of things. But I get concerned about, you know, what happens when I have to go to maybe four lunch waves, five lunch waves and things like that. If you shrink the cafeteria space, or if you make the gym smaller and the media center or flex spaces a little bit smaller, where do those kids then go? Or what's the size of those classrooms? So, you know, I think, again, you know, my answer to this question is pretty much always going to be the same is, you know, whatever building size we have, a number of kids show up. We'll figure out how to get them educated in that space. But the question on the table, when you have a, a blank slate, as, as we do, so to speak, is that you're building for the optimal experience. And, and the reason why the jump happened really in, in square footage. And Roger, you can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but it really does come from the increase in classroom sizes to going to that third academic team per grade level. But that's kind of. That's kind of the question, I think, that we're all grappling with. You know, with knowing that we're not going to have seven hundred and twenty kids in this building when it opens, arguably. It kind of is like, you know, what's all that space going to be? So I think that's the simplest answer to the question, which is, you know, going from, say, two academic labs. Or three academic labs to two academic labs in the new building. Could you make that work? Sure, you could make that work. But if I have to run three academic labs at the same time, then one of those is going to be in a social studies classroom. If it's in a social studies classroom, they're not going to have their anchor charts and other things that they use for instructional purposes in that room. It's not necessarily the ideal situation. So, you know, again, I can give you a lot of different scenarios, but I think the idea is that when you look at what a middle school is and how it operates. And bringing teams of interdisciplinary teachers together around kids, the moment you make a science wing, your science teachers now all meet with the science teachers. They don't actually meet with the other teachers and talk about the kids that they share. And that's, again, you can make that decision, but it comes from a philosophical or programmatic lens of a, of a. Sort of a parameter or barrier you've now put up, if that makes sense.
Does. Michael Joseph?
Yeah, Mr. Healy made the point better than I did, the, I. And I, and I think it's important to, to consider, you know, there are too many middle schools in the country. Who just knows, I've been in enough of them in the city where things have shoehorned the team concept. And the things are shoed or horned, horned into an existing infrastructure. We have the opportunity here not to do that and design, design an infrastructure that, that makes sense. To support the educational needs and, and the team structure. A question I have for Fran and then Roger, that I don't think we've, we've talked about before. But I think might be a, a possible way forward, because we have a unique dilemma here, right? The, next year, we're expecting five hundred students in the building. We know that over the next eighty years, we will have more than five hundred students in the building. But certainly over the next few, we won't, right? The six sixty gives us some flexibility, particularly if we develop a plan. Or an option for students to move over and take advantage of the new facility. Seven twenty would be two hundred more kids than we're expecting in the building next year, which might be too much. But beyond that. We can only plan so many eventualities in the short run. So my question is, have you seen ed specs? Where the building is designed in such a way, such that. Additions, a, a later addition is, is more possible. So that a future board down the line, we're all, while we're all in the retirement community, watching from our, from the front porch. You know, they, and the school, they, they need more kids, they can say, hey, that really smart board in twenty twenty-two. Developed and, you know, developed a building where addition is more feasible, and we can add another team or something like that. Does that, does that exist? Have you, have you seen things like that?
Okay, yeah, yes, I've seen that. Just to go back a little bit with what the, what started this discussion, and Tom addressed. He's absolutely right, we, it was very clear that when we, when we got to that seven twenty number. The dynamic of the school changed dramatically, and that's why the, the, so much more space had to be. Calculated in. If you were to use a hybrid and reduce and just maybe keep the quantity of classrooms, but lose some of the other spaces. It's a compromise, and I think what would happen is if you do in fact get to the seven hundred student level. You would then be struggling to make the program work. You'd be almost where you're at right now with the school. You'd have, you know. Too many students for, and not enough space. So, your point about. Future expansion has been addressed in the other educational specifications. The problem is that they become more of a suggestion, and we can't mandate it in the ed spec. But what we can do is we can say things like, this school should be designed in such a way that the, it could take an additional floor. So in other words, the, rather than just putting in the minimum roof structure, you actually plan a floor joy system. So that they could in fact build another floor on top of an existing floor. Or you also say things like, you know, you can't have, you must have double loaded corridors, because they're the most efficient. And you, and you can also have other areas where wings could be added. Sometimes they're putting courtyard and those are, those actually are resistant to additions, because everybody's fighting for window space. So there's things like that, what we, we can incorporate into the ed spec. What happens though, usually in the design process, and that's going to be the next step that's going to occur. Is when people start to figure out how they can save money, they start to value engineer some of those items out. So in other words, if, if you in fact request that that get put in the ed spec, then someone has to make sure that that, that stays in there. So that when that need comes in twenty thirty-five or whenever it does come. And this new board of that, a new building committee can, can then say, oh, yes, we, we kind of planned that that might happen. And this is what we should do. We can put an addition here very easily, or we can put a second floor on this part of the building. But like I said, that has to be incorporated in the ed specs. It has to be followed through, through the design process.
Okay. Joe, I believe you were next.
Sure. Well, I, I'm not going to say anything different than I've been saying all the way along. And I'm not going to try to be too persuasive on this topic, but I'll just mention it because I feel I have to. I, I don't believe this is ripe to push forward. I think we still have some work to do. Just talking about the difference between six sixty and seven twenty, how we're kind of split on those numbers, there's still some more work to do. We need to tighten those numbers up. We need to justify those numbers. I had some phone calls over the last couple of days about the, the number of, of seven twenty possibly being the number of a school that houses five hundred and eleven students. And something we talked about, which these people were not aware of, and they're important people in the process. Where that we're talking about the possibility of expanding the, the size of the building based on both eastern and western middle school being over subscribed to at this point. So they were unaware of when using those calc, thinking or seeing those numbers that, that was something we were thinking about relieving pressure on. So there's a lot of things, both at our end and, and the communication with the community, so they can understand what our decisions are. I also feel, and I've talked about this before, and I'll say it again, and I'll try to be quick, so I don't want to be beating a dead horse. But basically, we have a lot of design, a, a lot of vision, a, a lot of ideas and thoughts we have to put forward. I had a, or at least think about, I had a meeting or had a discussion with Tom Hagney, a, a friend. And somebody who has worked with us on the Cardinal Stadium Committee, but also more importantly, he was a member of nine building committees. And was the chairman of five of them. And he made it very clear to me that as much as we try to protect the ability to oversee this process, once we hand over the approved ed specs. That it is a hundred percent in his mind, the building committee's process going forward. It'll be hard for us, even though they have to get our approval for a design of the building. It'll be hard for us to, to show or change our opinion of that or their, what they're putting for approval, because it's no longer just us saying yes or no. If we say no to what they've worked on for some time and what they're putting forward, we have to have some really good reasons why we're saying no. It's not just us saying no. We have to justify our saying no. So it's better beforehand for us to understand what we're asking them to do. If we're asking them to do something, it, it, it's, it's in our vision and we want them to be seeing it the same way we are. We have to make sure they understand what that vision is. A final suggestion, which I haven't made before, now that I know Tony Turner is the chair of this committee, I'm happy about that. That at least brings a little comfort to me, because I know Tony's a good man. So if maybe Tony could, Tony Turner could come and possibly before we approve the ed specs. Come before the board, our board, and maybe we could have a discussion about what he sees with his, or this project going forward. So if we do want to, well, I don't want to use the word rush, but we want to push this project forward. Let's make sure that he is maybe on a, well, a similar page that we're on and understand that he's seeing it the same way we are. I'm just concerned we're giving a blank sheet to a, to the building committee and, and not giving them any guidance. I think we have a lot more guidance to give them, and I don't want to leave it to chance. They might do a great job without our guidance. They might exceed our expectations. But it also might go the other direction. But I believe Mike, who said something about looking back from the future, whoever said that. I want to make sure that when we do this, that we have something to say about, about making sure it's done correctly. If it's done incorrectly, I don't want to say, well, we passed it on to somebody else that was somebody else who did it wrong. Now, we'll be on record for saying what we want. We'll be on record for saying we want it designed a certain way. And they're not bound to our design suggestions, but they certainly have to get approvals from us. And if they're far from what we suggested, what we want, and we could justify our not approving. Because as I made my last example, if we put forward a triangle and they build a square, we could clearly express to them why we, our expectations were not met. When they came back with a square, when not we suggested a triangle. So I've probably went on too long. I apologize, but I'm still, at this point, I think we should not, I'll move forward on this. We have a little more or some more work to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right. I think Christina, you were next, and then Karen.
Thank you. And, and Joe, I agree, we're not ready for a vote this evening. And I've been harping on it with Kathleen, so that's why she said, I seconded it just to put it on the table. I like the idea, I've mentioned it, I know I've talked to some of my colleagues about the notion of. Creating a plan that allows for future expansion, which, you know, as we're all grappling with right size of the school. And I think your point about follow through is important. And I think that goes to Joe's point about a discussion with the building committee, the chair, and maybe the members of the building committee. But similarly, there are other, a couple of other questions I had about kind of less about the square footage, but just kind of global concepts. And just your experience of putting ed specs together. Two things would be about this notion of where does the building get cited, right? That we're anticipating that the building would be cited on a separate location. In order to allow us to continue using the current building until the new building is done. So that's kind of number one, like, how do we communicate that in an ed specs? I actually want to ask that one, and then I'll ask my other one, which is completely different. So if you want to, Roger or Fran want to, have you seen that or have you done that before?
Sure. Chris, actually, you could also speak to this, because you've been involved in several projects where we've worked, done exactly that. I think there's really three choices when you're going to build a new school. And you can either build a new school within the existing school, and they do that in phases. They'll do a section, tear down a section. And it's really rather difficult, but it can be done and it's been done. West Haven did it with their high school. And there's been a few others have done that. The other option is to build it on the same site, but in an adjacent location. And then when the school is built, you transfer the kids in there, the other school is raised. And, and that becomes your athletic fields and some of the other things that you are going to need. And then the third option is you find a completely new site, okay? So we, at this stage, don't know what the options are going to be. So we're just writing that regardless of what option is selected, this is the product that you want to end up with, okay? Now, if we get more direction, in other words, if the town can tell us, absolutely, there's not going to be a new site. It's going to have to be on that site. We can incorporate that thinking within the educational specifications, okay?
Well, when you say on that site, do you mean on the campus or on the same, for the same footprint?
No, I'm, I'm talking on the same campus. In other words, I think there's about nineteen acres, okay?
Twenty-two.
Whatever.
I mean, we don't know what the conditions are. No, but I, I, I don't think there is, I mean, I could be wrong. I think that's something we're probably eight zero, that we're keeping it on the same footprint, because we, on the same campus, because we don't have another place to put it.
That's kind of what I heard.
Yes. So that part, I, so a completely new site, I think is probably not in the cards. I think it's a safe bet. But I just, if we say, okay, we're going to be, so this is something we haven't put in there yet, saying we want it on this campus. Because I think it actually did get mentioned during the building committee meeting today, as someone did say sort of randomly, well, what if we put it somewhere else? I'm like, it was a little taken aback. So we could put something about that in there saying on the same campus. And we would, because if it goes on the same site, obviously it changes our timetable. If we have to move kids and don't have a place to educate them during construction, it completely changes our equation. Correct?
Well, yes and no. We did Charter Oak Academy in, in West Hartford. And the new school was built literally within twenty feet of the existing school. A real nice safety plan was put together. And actually, Chris, you were much more involved in that. Once I got past the original stage, you can talk a little bit about that. But that, the kids went to that school and it was uninterrupted until the new one was built. And then they were transferred over and then the old one came down.
Right. But I think that's what, no, but my point is that that's the kind of scenario I believe we are all anticipating. As opposed to it going on the same place as where the building sits now. No, no, I'm saying, but I don't think we've communicated that concept in these ed specs.
Okay, we can work on that. Yeah.
I think I, I, that would be, so that was my first one point. The build to expand point was another. And then my third is, we talked a little bit about the energy usage. And, and I know we don't want to mandate, but do we want to set more than the state level goal, right? Like, we'd see, we'd like them to explore the options to make it a net zero building or something like. And again, we've, we've kind of said you have to do what the state says you have to do, the lead silver, right?
That was the minimum.
But at the minimum, but that's all we've said at the minimum. And I think we as a board, it's obviously not your decision, Roger, but we as a board should be talking about. Do we want to at least set it as a goal? Because we could set it as a goal, but not. Correct?
Absolutely. You, you can, you can select whatever level of energy efficiency or environmental considerations you want to give to this. And we can incorporate that. We just can't, as writers of this document, impose that on you.
No, no, a hundred percent. But I just, I, again, we've gotten very hung up on the square footage.
Well, I think.
We don't want to ignore these parts of it.
One thing we did put in there, though, is we, we said that, you know, we know, we heard some input from your energy committee in town. We said that we suggested the architects meet with them and talk about their desires. And, and they can work with you and the board and them as well to determine.
No, we did. Yeah. I do remember that, but I just didn't know if it was, if we needed to kind of go beyond that. And that's kind of, kind of a question of my fellow board members as well.
Yeah. So you can pick the next level up if you want. You could say gold, rather than silver. And then that, it would be a number of points then that you'd have to achieve in order to get that higher level, okay? And, and again, if the board pulls together what, exactly what they'd like us to do, we'll incorporate that into the, into the educational specifications.
Great, Christina, can I jump in just for a second?
These are just my macro points. Yes, absolutely. I'm done, so.
Just, 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 I'm sorry, Mike, just jumping on the energy thing. I serve as a liaison on that group. And I meet with those guys. And the good news is Tony Turner is a member of that committee. So he is very excited about implementing energy savings on the, on the construction of that building. So he will look after that as somebody for the energy advisory committee as well as for us.
And I, I have faith in that, but then there's, you know, eight other members of, of the building committee, Joe. So we want to be sure Tony has support from us in terms of what, again, this is, you know, I know I've harped on specificity, but, and to your point, expectations, right? The same way the square, the square versus the triangle, I think what we're expecting in terms of energy, where the building is going to be cited and the future expansion. So those were kind of my macro points, and I will pass off to others.
I'm happy you mentioned that, Christina, because I did get a sort of last minute, few emails from the Energy Management Advisory Committee. It's too hard for me to make sense of all of it at this point, because it was sort of last minute. But clearly, they would like to see more than the lead silver target. But that is something we need to discuss, because I'm sure there are cost implications to that. So, so we need a little bit more information on that. And I could certainly forward these notes that I've been getting, but I just got them a little bit ago. So we can all opine on that in the next phase. Ms. Hirsch?
So just to make a point, and, and again, I, I go back to, I think, I made spreadsheet upon spreadsheet, looking at these figures, looking at current building size, current, like, and, and other. Suggestions that were in there. I looked back at our master facility plan. And in there, there was a drawing as to where we might put a, an existing building, you know, demo the existing building. And you could leave a little bit of it to existing building to remain and then build a new building around it, you know? And so I've looked at a couple of those different diagrams and it, and it sort of helped me get a, a little bit of a better idea of what we're doing. But again, much like Christina, you know, I said this at the start. But I, I think we are thinking about twenty, thirty, forty years from now and those, those students. But we also have to be cognizant of the ones we're educating today. I'll go back to the whole Glenville discussion. If you build it, they will come. It was one of my questions as well, which is, you know, at that time, there was a discussion of building a second story, but not outfitting it. Just having the framework and then saying, you know, you, you have the, you know. Electrical and plumbing that's run up there, but you know, it's an open space that could be then built out at some point. And it, you know, for a much lesser cost, adding a second story after the fact is really costly. And I distinctly remember that discussion. So, you know, that was a question that I certainly was wondering as well, if we would build an additional story, but not necessarily outfit it. You know. You know, I, I think the biggest issue we have to focus on is, the fact is, is that, once we build a new school, there are a lot of parents right now that are taking a look at what's going on at Central. And probably opting out of the school, which is keeping our numbers down, right, at five eleven next year per se. And if they know that a new building is coming and they know a new building will be here in two, three, four years, with, you know, once we knock it down or start our work. Four years from now, you're going to have parents coming back. Parents want to be in a new school. They want to be in a new facility. We, you know, and we saw it with Glenville. We've seen it with New Lebanon. Those numbers increased. So I, I don't have fear of that. I also know cyclically, we're going to be going back up. We're at an all-time low nationally and in the state as well. But so I guess my, my bigger question then is, is making sure that, you know, is there anything that we looked at? I liked that this version outlined how many fields that we would need to ensure that are remain on. I like that this version also discussed the minimum number of parking spots. I know I asked specifically how those, that information was derived and maybe for everyone else to hear, it might be helpful to share that. But I was wondering, you know, we haven't obviously looked to do soil testing. But the question then becomes is, because I know those fields are boggy, we've discussed replacing those fields. We asked to put that on hold until we did this. The question then becomes is, could we put a facility, even if you built it next door, without impacting the current educational program that we have? As well as impacting the use of, you know, the current field space. For the next several years, you know, I don't want to, it's very hard to balance the needs of students that aren't in, or it, even born yet. With, with those that we know will be matriculating in over the next few years. So I don't know if you guys have an answer for that, Fran and Roger, you know, if we've looked at the soil, if we think that it's, it could support. Another building, if there's anything in this current building that you might consider saving and repurposing. So those are my two questions.
Well, first off, in terms of soil conditions, that has, we've seen nothing in terms of testing and we wouldn't call for that, okay? So if the district decides to have some soil testing done, they, they could. But that usually takes place once the architects and engineers come on board, because they will also go out and identify exactly what areas they want testing. Because what they'll do is they'll come up with a, or actually probably come with several concepts about where they might want to cite the school. Or how they would want to approach building it. And then they would go out and have soil samples taken and core samples taken to determine what would have to be done. And I, I know we've heard things like there's some wet areas and there's some, you know, areas that are considered unsuitable. But all of those areas pretty much can be repaired and remediated for construction. There's different ways of doing it. There's pilings, they can pull out materials, bring in stone, drainage, curtain drains, all sorts of things. And they can make those areas, they can, they can remediate them to the point where they're, they're acceptable to build on. So I, I'm not real worried about whether they can find a spot to put the school. I think, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I think on your second part of that question is, will it impact the educational program for the kids that are currently there? I think there will be some impacts. Yes, I don't think that you can build a hundred and twenty or thirty thousand square foot building on that site without impacting them in some way. On that site without impacting them in some ways, in other words, schedule may be impacted. Bus route, parent drop off, athletic fields, those are the types of things that are going to be impacted. Because they don't just come in and build on the site, they need staging area. So they need to be able to bring in cranes, they need to be able to bring in all their materials in store and they have to have dumpsters and. Now, there's just a whole array of things that have to happen, and we have to also be cognizant of the neighborhood. So these are, these are all factored in when your architect and engineering firm is selected. We can't do that now, okay, we just know. It's going to happen. But we just don't have enough information and we're not involved in that design process. So I think that the best thing to do is to develop that spec that you think best suits your needs now and for the future. And then set your sights on bringing in a very high qualified architectural engineering team that has a ton of experience doing that.
So then the second piece of that is, you know, what are your thoughts on if you add a piece? Space in the second story somewhere that isn't fully built out, but could be built out as the need grows and or alternatively. If there's anything within that, the current facility that would be worth. Saving and or making part of a new facility.
My. Twenty-five years in school construction have indicated that most of the time. When you try to tie in a new. Building to an existing structure. That it. I don't think the economies are there. It's very difficult to tie in. And you, and the other thing that happens is the code requires that those existing spaces all have to be brought up to the current codes. So if, and things have changed in the last fifty years on the codes, so. There's wind load, snow load, there's all sorts of things that have to be taken into account, ADA. So whatever we tried to save in that existing school. Would more than likely be ripped down to probably, if you were lucky, just the steel beams and columns, okay, and maybe some concrete slab. Not sure it's worth it. So my guess is that it's rarely successful, it can be done and it has been, but it's not. Not the preferred method, I think you're better off if you just go forward with a new school situated on the same site. And take down the other one completely. That's my opinion, so I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect, but my experience is indicative, that's usually the way we go.
No, 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 thank you, I appreciate that, and I, I will note the one other piece and discussing with. Mr. Healy this morning was, there are a large. Boulders and rocks built that, that are absolutely lovely in the architecture. Of the landscaping, but might be a little detrimental. To some building processes, but I mean, ultimately, the reason I asked some of those questions was, was not just. From my understanding, but I think it's also important for us as a board, if we're looking to add something to the ed specs and we want to make sure we put it here, we want to make sure we save this or don't save this. Is the understanding that it, it also has the possibility of impacting. I, I don't want, I don't want to hem stuff in before we've even started. To, to discuss things with an architect, I think that's my bigger concern of saying it has to go next to it, it has to be here. If we don't really know what that might mean, but I do want to, I do want to make sure we don't have to move our students off the site.
Yeah, we, we understand that, and I would, and I don't think you would have to, but I also want to be clear that. It would not be without some impact.
Well, thank you, I'll, I'll turn this over to someone else.
I was gonna say, I think Dan wants to talk, because he could talk about soil, all right? Mr. Watson?
Well, I can't talk about soils yet, other than that, we did a preliminary review of the soils. When we were looking at replacing the field, we were looking for contaminants, we currently have. A, an engineering firm contracted to do tests, samples, borings. They were under the. Misguidance that the building was going to go as per the KGD. Documents that showed the new building directly behind that. I quickly told them, hey, we need to look at the entire site. Everywhere where there's not a building right now, there's going to do some kind of preliminary testing. At which point, hopefully, the building committee will be up to speed, we'll be able to decide, hey, here's your best locations. Let's look at it, if I need, if they need to do more borings, they're going to do them, but we're trying to get ahead of the game by at least saying, hey. Don't go over there. That's the worst place you can go, or hey, this looks like a great place here, there's some, there's some ledge directly underneath it that can hold, you know. A four-story building, what have you. As far as, I just, this is my own opinion, as far as saving a building. What I can tell you is the only place that was even recognized would be the new wing. Which I think now is forty years old or thirty years old. What was that time, zero?
Nine ninety-nine, so.
Ninety-nine, okay, so I'm a little bit off, but. We've had some serious water infiltration in that building. The way the site is currently set up. Any serious storms roll down the hill and due to the. Construction that, in the water actually gets underneath the walls and Tom, how many floods have we had in the last eighteen months, three? So. There's not much worth saying, besides the fact, besides the fact, like Roger pointed out. You know, there's been a lot of changes in codes in the systems, you're, you're just not. Chopping down half a building and plug and play into new systems. It's not worth it, I, I think it, it just doesn't pay off. My own opinion.
Yeah, I'm not, that was a good reminder on the soil testing, because that was part of our interim was to get that started, so.
Thank you, yeah, that was new information to, for discussion, so thanks.
Yes. Ms. Kowalski.
Sorry, I had to find a mute button, so I have just have a, I think these questions are probably for Tony, you know, we've talked a lot about this concept of, you know, if you build it, they will come. So how many kids, do we have this number, how many kids are. Leaving CMS and opting out for either Western or. And actually going to Western and Eastern Middle School.
Yeah, that, that's a hard question, I would have to pull, you're talking about out of district students, so it changes every year, because.
No, no, I'd say in district students, because we're talking, what I'm saying is. How many kids that are in district that otherwise would be districted for CMS, are they leaving and going and get, asking for permission and getting into. Eastern or Western Middle School?
Yeah, I mean. Go ahead.
Have that many, it's mainly if a family moves, like if they're in eighth grade and the family moves, they have a right to stay there, or if they're going to the magnet. At Western, but we tend to actually have more magnets from Eastern than we do from CMS to Western.
Okay, and then how many kids in, I don't, I don't know if we talked this, but how many kids start. At one of our elementary schools that are slated for CMS. Leave the district to a private school and then come back to high school, do we have that data?
We probably could pull that, but I, that would just be a guess for me right now, so I couldn't answer that without actually pulling the data.
Okay, and then. I, I think the question of. I don't, you know, we should ask the question regarding, you know, if we're going to build this school and what size and the potential that we're coming, I think the question is. Do we at some point redistrict to fill these seats? I don't think anyone in this town wants to redistrict, I think they hate that word, I think that's a four-letter word. But the only thing that I can think of is if, you know, we're going to redistrict. Is adding a, you know, an entire elementary school and slated for Central that was otherwise slated for, say, Eastern, because that's where, you know, the alleged congestion is. So the question is, do we want to do that and, you know, are we going to ask the, that community whether or not that's something they'd consider saying? If your entire school was now slated, go to Central, is this something you'd want to do, yes or no, I mean. We're all talking about if they build it, they will come, but we haven't actually asked that question, and I'm not really buying into that. Given the fact that so few kids are leaving CMS that are otherwise slated to ask to go to a different school. So I just don't think we should be building a bigger school based upon that. I was just trying to, before you got to me, look at the new lab numbers, because I think the same scenario was discussed there, is if you build it, you know, they'll, they'll go to New Lebanon. And we haven't seen that, and that school is, God, I think, off the top of my head, somewhere around seventy seats that are empty, if not more, so I. I think we need to be mindful of that and build the school appropriately. For, for the numbers and we've talked a lot about this and, and. And I, and I've talked to many of you, but I'm firmly on the side of. The, those six sixty numbers is the biggest I would ever go, I think that's almost too big at this point, based upon the numbers and probably would go to something smaller. But given where I think the conversation is headed and most people think. That would be the, the number that I'm at, I think that's the right size. Based upon the data that we've been given, because again. I just don't see the numbers over the next two decades ever filling this particular school, and we need to be mindful of the fact that. Even though we have this school. And that size, you know, there is an incremental cost to having a school that's partially unused, you got to heat it, you got to cool it, you got to maintain it. And we have to build that into our overall budgets and capital going forward. And I'll say it again, as I've said, if we build this too big, we run the risk. Of not getting this through all of the other. Elements of government that we have in this town, and I just, I'm very concerned about losing time. If we come up with the wrong, the, the wrong plan, so I just, I know we're not voting tonight, I get that. But I think we need to really consider those points, and I've said it before, I don't mean to beat a dead horse. Joe has said his piece before and he's not, and I agree, he's not beating a dead horse, it's very important to him, and this is very important to me, so I'm going to say it again. We need to be mindful and we cannot look at this budget. You know, in this particular school in a vacuum, we need to look at the overall program going forward and how we spend our money and I'm, so. That's why I will never vote for seven twenty or having anything near it.
Okay, Ms. Koston?
So I am trying to be as deliberative as I can, I do have a couple of questions about the ed specs, but. First, I recall reading, and I just looked it up. There are four hundred and fifty-six homes and townhomes proposed for a hundred and fifty-four acre lot. In Greenwich. Would that be zoned for? Central? I mean, we have a lot of planning and zoning in this town that is not clear to me exactly whether it'll be approved, whether it'll come to be. And I've said it to some of you, a lot of the people that. You know, will be eventually the parents of students or not even pregnant yet, so I, you know, I have some doubts about some of the projections. But when I read headlines like that. I start to worry about appropriately sizing this building. The other thing is. You know, I've said I'm most comfortable at six sixty. I do think having a cafeteria that might accommodate. You know. A larger set of students and hold on, I'll pick up. The ed spec and just look at the size of the cafeteria, but anyway, the seven twenty slated size for the cafeteria is, is probably. An investment that makes sense, just so that if we did have a swell in, in population. That we could at least accommodate feeding the children who. Who would show up at our door looking to be educated, I'm just trying to find the. The cafeteria. In the current ed specs, and then the last.
Five thousand eighty versus forty-six fifty-seven.
Right, I, I think, you know, as I'm looking at the dining. I would be comfortable. Building for. A, a larger cafeteria in the event that we had to feed all these kids, because there is some, there is some headroom above six sixty. So I, I want to be cognizant of that, but also make sure that the most important communal space can accommodate. A bubble if we have one, or even a sustained bubble. And then the last question I had was. There is now a music room in our ed specs that wasn't there before, was it omitted before? Or was it the music room that doesn't correspond to chorus or to orchestra or band or, or any of the other programming, there is a. Classroom, I just wondered if it was added in because we have an ed spec. Before us that is sized for seven hundred and twenty students, is that an extra addition or was it omitted previously? Accident.
Okay, when we, when we met before, Fran, are you going to take that?
Yeah, it was, it was not omitted, it was not necessary at that point, because we had three spaces to hold music class at that point, and with. Anything with six sixty or under, we would be able to accommodate. Extra classes with regard to having a grade level have. When they have like, you know. Trying to think of the word, like a special, you know, or art or gym or music, they would have plenty of spaces. At the point where you're going to seven twenty, at that point, we were going to need an additional, some additional spaces. So we thought a general music room at that point would be necessary. Because of how we would be dividing up the kids, so we added that at that point.
And just one other question while we have, and. There is some confusion. About the program space versus total square footage. So when we see the, the number at the bottom of the matrix. And it says a hundred and thirty-six thousand build, total building area, that includes everything. Communal spaces, you know, cafeteria, correct?
Yep, that's everything, that's every janitor closet, everything.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Joseph?
So I. I'm wondering about how we can move along, I, I'm hearing a number of folks talking about. Liking the, the six sixty number, four of us were there, yes, last time, I was not one of them, I think I've. Moved to that, that number for the reasons I articulated, if we were going to do a sense of the meeting and I think we're looking for another sense of ed specs. They, I still like the compromise idea, and I think Christina's point was well done, well, well, well made here, I think. You know, the most important thing in the ed specs is that we articulate. Our, our values, right, and what we really want to see in, in the building, right? So I think we can have debates and motions about that next time, the, but I, I would argue that. The most important things for us, it might be the commitment to the team structure. And because we know that works from, from, from middle schools around the country. And then secondly, this idea, this compromise idea of putting in the ed specs. Plan for expansion such that if we do end up, you know, a future board can weigh decisions, we don't have to make decisions for the future board, but, but I think. I like both of those as, as commitments, as far as a compromise motion here to move to the credit of this for. As well as Kathleen, your note from last time to address some of Joe's concerns about. You know, monitoring and being in touch and being, and working in collaboration with the building committee as opposed to just passing it off to them.
Yeah, because, you know, I was going to say something else, but why don't you go and then?
Thank you, kind of following up to Mike's point, I guess the question becomes, I was going to go to process, how we're going to move this along, because we're all talking and we're all have a lot of ideas. And obviously, all our discussions have to take place in public, so this is challenging, that we're all getting, we get together, we talk about things and we don't move it along. And I guess to his point, if. Say, okay, you know, we're, we're, we're kind of in between these two, is there a way to hybrid, like to your point earlier? The six sixty number, but with some tweaks to what the six sixty was, right, so and then the question becomes. Do we let Fran and Roger start hashing it out, do we send in comments but in writing, like, you know, how do we move the process along? And I don't, I don't have an answer, I'm just, I don't, I, I don't know where everybody's head is, so that's.
I have a couple of. Yeah, okay, no, this is a great conversation, and I know I sort of opened with going straight into it and it's kind of hard to, but to me, this is no different than. Sometimes when we make motions around the budget, right? So I think that we're all circling. So I think that we're all circling, like, there's a compromise here, right? And I liked everything people said tonight, including the, having the ability to add later on. My only concern that I heard about that tonight is that that means that you probably can't add to the cafeteria later on, right? So, so things like that. To Laura's point, I mean, do we sort of take a few items in this menu and sort of say, it's like a cable model. You know, I, I want HBO and Netflix and all that, but can I also add one other thing here? And if we use six sixty maybe as the base, we can then, with the ability to add into the ed spec, the ability to expand, but recognize that a few spaces we oversize. Cause for example, let's remember, we were already oversizing the, the performance center, which was for the community, right? So that was not necessarily what we wanted, not that I'm saying that I have a problem with that, but that was something that the community asked for, right? And that's important, but that does put a lot of square footage in there that is not necessarily helpful to the everyday students, right? Whereas the cafeteria is probably pretty important, right? And if, if this building does grow to, which I again went on in my grave, I am convinced that there will be more than seven hundred children in this building. And so my grandchildren will probably be happy that they're in a bigger cafeteria. So, you know, if we think about that, then we could always sort of say, but we won't do the classrooms for anything more than six sixty and the guidance and the media and the music, blah, blah, blah. Then maybe that's a good, a good split. And then we only end up at
Don't worry about doing the math. That's what Roger and Fran are for.
Yeah, I mean, so, so then I think we're in a better zone. So what I guess I'd suggest and, but please everyone think about this is that we, I, I guess I should take a sense of the meeting, first of all. And maybe the sense of the meeting is that you're at sort of a, not a specific number, but a six sixty plus.
Suggestion, the motion could be, you know, after hearing our discussions, that Roger and Fran go back and come back to us with a plan for six sixty with the mod, with some modifications to what was originally thought of in line with our discussions this evening. I don't know if Roger and Fran, if that's too vague or if you guys.
No, that's all we need. That's all we need. Cause we'll work with Tom.
And, and if I could add to that motion then, and perhaps maybe we should do it in a separate motion, but this is the sense of the meeting, is I wanted then have decision points for the other things you mentioned tonight. So for example, the energy piece, which like I said, I just get, get some information on. I can't opine on that at all and it's not for me to, it's for all of us to do that, but that will have, you know, of course, cost implications, but as you put it, Michael Joseph, what are our values, right? And so, but that's a decision point again. So I see that as a separate motion in our final meeting. I also think there should be a separate motion around these quarterly updates that I mentioned that I think hopefully satisfies Joe in some ways that we also are getting and that's sort of how, how often are, what are the decision points for that? I'd also want a separate motion around that. And then I think we, we don't need a separate motion, but we've all definitely saying this is, will be cited at Central Middle School. It will be somewhere on the property. And it seems like we're already doing the soil testing around that. Ms. Kowalski?
I had, I don't, I don't disagree with anything that you just said. But do we have to do six sixty? Could we, is it too much to ask to see the comparison between six hundred and six sixty? Or is it a way, sorry, or is it a way to just simply do it in that quick Excel sheet that we got before, just to say what the differences would look like on a square footage basis rather than sketch it out in ed specs?
Well, I have to say, I mean, you'd have to make a separate motion on that. That's not, that's not the feeling I'm getting from and in order to move it forward, but I let others opine on that. I've I mean, you could just vote against the motion I guess I was putting forth.
I see, okay.
Motion B, six sixty plus the caf- noted in our current ed spec for seven twenty.
I think, I think Karen Hirsch say something while I work on the motion and I, then I'll.
So point of order, there's a, there's a motion on the table.
While you've, there's no, but she hasn't made an act.
No, I haven't made it. I was kinda.
If you look, I, I've spent a lot of time and taken all of the information that we have and put it into a couple of different Excel formats, right? So if you take six sixty, the information that we got when they, when, you know, Fran and Roger gave us a new plan that had what it could look like at six sixty, seven twenty, and then whatever was seven eighty. And we were all like, ah, seven eighty, no. So I took the numbers from six sixty and seven twenty and plotted them in. And I'm comparing it to, you know, our current program. Six sixty in a lot of ways is very similar to sort of the overall size of the current building. It's, it's just a little bit bigger. You know, I, I know in talk, I've said it a hundred times. I don't wanna keep, you know, beating a dead horse. I was like, I thought seven hundred gives you flexibility down and up. But I understand why you can't really do that in a teaming model in some regards. Maybe there are some flexibilities here. I understand we don't have an unlimited budget to do with as we wish. We don't have an actual budget for this now anyway, but we just have to be very thoughtful when we're doing this because again, it is, I, I think Tom made a really good point is it does impact how they program. Have the program their day, how the students are going to have access to specials, how many, you know, different classrooms they're gonna have. And yes, you, putting something at six sixty means you probably have some swing space upward. But again, like I said, I, I've done a lot of calculations looking at, you know, enrollment from like the seventies onward. And, and at one point, we again, we went up to, it was nineteen seventy, we had a high of over eleven thousand students in the district. Over eleven thousand, that's, that's more than we have now. There was a low in nineteen eighty-eight of sixty-five hundred, right? So we're back up to over nine thousand and have been for a while until the past like two years and we know it's gonna go back up. So if, if you just look at the past twenty years in Central, you have more than seven years over six hundred and fifty students. And we know it's gonna go back there. So just when we, we think about it is just to, to be thoughtful about how, how we're doing this. It's not about the next couple of years. What we're building isn't gonna be for the students that are gonna be here for the next couple of years anyway. So that number is gonna be going, will go back up. So, you know, again, so we just have to really be cognizant of that, I think, when we're asking these questions. That's all.
Okay, here's my motion. Putting forth for a sense of the meeting, for us to ask the consultants to come back with a ed specification that considers six hundred and sixty students with either additional capacity to build classrooms to seven twenty and or classroom space to accommodate the classroom, seven twenty at this time plus a cafeteria suitable to fit seven hundred and twenty students and stop. Additionally, options around energy efficiency as well as period and stop. The quarterly updates would be something completely different, which we could write in. So it doesn't need to be a part of the ed specs.
And Kathleen, on the same note, would it be possible, we don't have to put in a motion, the request for the building committee or the chair of the building, the committee to come before us in the next meeting?
No, this is just sort of the direction to Roger and Fran, but that's something, yep.
Thank you.
I'll second that as, as, as verbose as it was.
Sloppy and verbose as it was. Okay. Let me do a roll call on that to Karen.
This discussion, discussion.
Discussion. Yeah, so let me explain that a little bit. Thank you for saying the discussion. What I was trying to do was give you the six sixty, but give Fran and Roger the option to come back and sort of meet us at the, your suggestions where you have the ability to build for the seven twenty or my suggestion at the beginning of the meeting where you do build for just the academic space for the seven twenty. And so then that would just be sort of the, the first, the first bit on this spreadsheet, the first column. So that was kind of a two-pronged thing. Then it was everything else along the six sixty line, but enhance, but the cafeteria going to the seven twenty. That's what I was trying to accomplish in that motion.
Also, Joe would like it to look good.
Right.
So this is to clarify, so this is not a motion approving any ed specs to building committee or anything like that. This is simply just like last time, suggestions to the Fran and Roger, our consultants, draft an initial, an additional draft of the ed specs for us to.
It's not an additional draft, it's a revised draft.
Revised draft.
And then also in that motion, the verbose motion, was the energy management. Because that will also have, I know there's a few different areas, but I'm not on top of that enough to give you that direction. But I know that it's more than the current one that's in there.
So your thought being that within this subsequent draft, there are some decision points that we can then vote upon.
Yes. And, and I could submit those things because I've received a lot of that from the Energy Management Advisory Commission. I just need to find a way that that gets into the public to make sure that we can all have that, make those decisions together.
Well, that was what I was gonna ask. I was gonna say, I don't know enough about the Energy Commission to know the difference between a, a gold standard and a silver standard, et cetera. I, I think for, for, I, I would posit it to say out of the eight board members, majority of us probably don't know the difference. So I'd like to have a little information on that before I jump right in. If, if we can understand what that, what the differences in the levels are or we voice that upon. I mean, we, we could want, I don't know what it is, the platinum and diamond level. I, I don't know. I don't know enough about it to know what the difference in levels are and what that will mean for the building of the facility. I mean, it could mean adding ten thousand square feet for some kind of specialty generator. I don't know. So that's all I'm saying. I don't know.
And I think, can I suggest amending the motion that the cafeteria also be one of the decision points?
Yeah, that's fine. Do you want me to rewrite my motion?
Can I make a suggestion that you just withdraw it and rewrite it?
Okay, I'm withdrawing a motion.
I think that's just gonna make it a lot cleaner. A sense of the meeting anyway, so it's not. For the minute, for the minute, but it's for the minutes. So I was. I, I take them. I know, I was trying to.
Let me do this again. Okay, so I'm, a sense of the meeting motion that we look at the ed specifications for six hundred and sixty students with either additional capacity to build for seven twenty down the road and or classroom to space to accommodate them at this time plus a decision point between a cafeteria sized for six hundred and sixty students or seven hundred and twenty students, period. Additionally, a set of choices around energy management.
Seconded.
I am not a lawyer and so that was good enough.
Why don't we call it what you wanna call, I mean, since it is Joseph's testimony. Let's call the question. I was.
So I am a yes. Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Christina Downey? Did you say yes, Christina Downey? Okay. Laura Costin?
Yes.
Karen Hirsch?
You come back to me. I'm still trying to absorb what you said.
Trying to write the motion.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to absorb what the motion said while I was typing it. So can you come back to me?
Sure, Karen Kowalski?
No, cause I don't need the extras.
Yep, Joe Kelly?
Yes.
Cody Kittle?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'm back to you, Ms. Hirsch.
I think it doesn't matter what I say, so I'm gonna go with abstain.
Okay, fine. Six one one, that passes. And again, it's a sense of the meeting. It's just giving them a formal direction. So, Ms. Downey?
I have one more process question, since we're talking about process at this point.
Yes.
And I guess this is to Roger and Fran or to Tony. We talked about planning and zoning. We also have an MI process. Projects gonna, municipal improvement, the process that the project's gonna have to go through. Is that, that's for the board of that, that's for us or is this once we have a site plan? I don't know. And maybe Dan knows, I'm just kinda, it just kinda sprung to mind that, you know, we certainly need to be figuring out where that is in our timeline. Does anyone know?
For what exactly? Sorry, John?
No, for like with PMZ and whether this needs MI status, you know, with PMZ before we start design.
Christina, we're, we're gonna need a lot of design first before we get in front of the, for missing. There's a lot of work we have to do to get there.
Usually the architects and engineers will meet with town officials very early in the process to find out what their processes are and to bring them, and to bring them into it. And that way, nobody gets caught with a surprise by missing something.
Well, that's why, cause I think with the stadium, we had to go, didn't we have to go through the status, Joe? With the Board of Selectmen and so it just, and that was something that had to get done very early in the process, so.
It'll be, it'll be cleanly out of our hands by the time we get an MI.
Joe now wants it out of our hands then.
Okay, the other things that I would just note, again, not for the ed specs, but just in terms of everyone being satisfied, one of the things that I'll make sure we add to the motion when we do vote is, you know, that of course, that it would be on Central Middle School, current property. And that we would like some sort of, and we can work on this quarterly updates or something that we feel we're, we're involved in the process. Was there something else I missed that's beyond? Hearing it, okay, at this time, okay. I know this isn't like an easy process, but this is like we said, a once in generation thing. And I think that it's cool that we're all being so flexible and thoughtful. So I hope that's coming through. Michael Joseph?
Yeah, so if, if we're, we're done, I just, what, I think we should, I just wanna think that strongly urge, unfortunately, that we have a special meeting later to consider this other issue with St. Roxfield. We know we had a lot of people on that, we're expecting to hear that tonight. And I think we always need to have that conversation some point soon.
Okay, we can't talk about that though, in, as we do it, as we talk about the next.
We're not, we're not, we don't have agenda planning on here either, so.
Exactly. So I can't even really, what I'm going to ask Roger and Fran about their timing and then I'll come back to the board with an appropriate time. But Roger and Fran, what do you think this would take? And I know we just keep adding iterations to you, but what do you think this would take to sort of frame this?
We'll be a week on this.
A week, okay. All right. So let me talk to Dr. Jones and then I will reach out to all of you. It's too hard with vacation schedules and everything like that. But I'll reach out to you guys with some suggested times once I settle on that. Anything else? Okay, so no.
Can I just ask if there are, please mark the changes again, just, it was very, it was supremely helpful, that yellow highlighting, guys, and really, much appreciated.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thanks again, guys. Really, it's, it's, oh, one other thing I should have mentioned is that we did receive emails too from the Central Middle School PTA. I should just note that publicly, they did like it as presented. But hopefully we'll continue to engage the community as we continue to, to go through these specifications. Okay, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Ms. Hirsch, all right, can I get a second? Ms. Costin, okay, we have to do a roll call. Kathleen Stoney, yes. Michael Joseph? Yep, okay, Christina Downey?
Yes.
Okay, Laura Costin? Karen Hirsch?
Yes.
Karen Kowalski?
Yes.
Joe Kelly?
Yes.
And Cody Kittle?
Yep.
Thank you all for joining on our summer vacation. Really appreciate it. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.